Um, I think the main purpose tonight is just to review the amendments that have been sent to planning commission for review. And also along the way, we've already picked up a lot of other good suggestions to, for planning commission to consider, to put in as amendments to the zoning code as well. So, everything I'm aware of, I'm gonna try to get into this conversation. Anything else anybody wants to bring up, or any research, or Jeff's here tonight, anything we need to research to, to consider for our code. At some point, I guess, let us know that. And if, so if we're just gonna do one by one. The first one outdoors, storage in residential areas, this would permit people to store things in their front more than forty-eight hours. I can tell you what we were thinking of, is if somebody got a load of something, they had to move it around, you know, they couldn't leave it out and sit there for forty-eight hours. Or wood or something, that's what we're trying to achieve there. If it's a situation, which I don't even know what it would be, but if necessary, we could require that they screen it if they're gonna have to store it, so. Um, that's what we're accomplishing that. And again, that's strictly for the residential areas, that particular section. Uh, the next piece is junk storage. This would be village-wide. In any district, accumulation and/or storage of junk vehicles, disabled or inoperative machinery, equipment, dismantled parts of vehicles, machinery or equipment, discarded appliances and furnishings of or junk and debris shall be prohibited except when stored within a completely enclosed building or structure. Um, and then when we're talking about residential areas per se, well, even in any area, then those buildings or structures are gonna have to, you know, setbacks gonna kick in, height requirements, size requirements, all that. So you have another layer there of protection as well. Um, and I guess I do have one question on that, that we'll have to consider, and I didn't know if we needed any of, any further comment in home occupations. You know, as far as naming that, and you don't have an answer to that right now, but we should probably take a look at that, see if we need anything additional.
Okay.
State for, um, junk collection, I guess would be the title, I don't know, we'll have to look into that. Um, the next one would be, uh, any commercial business service and retail operation would have to function entirely within an enclosed building unless a conditional use permit would be, um, granted under the covered code section that required, that covers the conditional use permit section. Um, next one, sign regulations. Okay, first, um, we will need, um, did I get that in here? I think in the additional stuff. We will need, if you could flip back just two pages to the additional suggestions, modifications. Uh, we needed to add a definition of abandoned signs. Um, the one in front of you right now states, "Any signed face or copy that no longer identifies a business that is in operation or that identifies an activity or event that has already occurred shall be considered abandoned." And that would be, um.
I'm not tracking with you, I'm missing something.
Oh, I'm so sorry. What I did.
I've got addition.
The, the first two pages are the ones that came from council.
Right.
But then there have been additional suggestions made, which are on the last two pages, so I'm gonna be.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Did you have those two in front of you? Right here, take a fresh look.
I must have lost a page.
There's one on the left.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the first two pages for the original ones that came through council, two planning, and then the last two pages are some
Got it.
inserts, additional things to consider and items. And, and one of those is strictly the definition of an abandoned sign, sign.
And I'll just tell you on that, if what you're looking at where it's parentheses, you see where it says one twenty-one point oh one. That you can, that'll get deleted. That's just a reference. This is a definition of abandoned signs that came from another zoning code that we saw, and that's probably just the
Okay.
code reference to the other, to the other code. Because this will fall within the one 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 point oh one.
It might also be our, I mean, we have a fun, we have a really funny list in our definitions, so this is like.
Could be.
Like here they start with, maybe they do, that weird. Um, actually, I think I picked that, because signs is first under signs, but then there's all sorts of signs, and I.
What will likely happen on, um, is that if you want to insert this new definition of abandoned sign, what will likely happen is that when we codify it with, um, the publisher, they usually, they'll, because you'll see there's definition of sign, and then all these different kinds of signs. It will probably go in, you're right, right there, but then all the other numbers maybe will get bumped down.
The change, yeah, okay.
But the publisher does that, so we don't have to.
Just getting it in there, that's the important thing. Okay, um, okay, so we had to identify it, define it, and then, um, we want to state what, what you have to do with it. And the abandonment, um, I'll read that section. "If any sign is abandoned for a period of at least ninety consecutive days in any twelve-month period," and originally we had that longer, that was six months, and we shortened that. "Such signs shall be a nuisance affecting or endangering surrounding property values and may be detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare of the municipality and shall be abated." Such sign, sign shall be abated within sixty days of notification by the zoning officer, either by first removing the sign in question, and here we're getting into like the, the struck issue of, um, ground signs and wall signs.
Right.
Um, removal includes "The total disassembly of the sign structure, including the base and/or the bracket or other form of attachment to the grade or surface on which the sign was erected, mounted or fixed." "Any sign not removed within the specified sixty-day time period may be removed by any municipality or owner's property owners expense and assess to their property owner on the next accounting property tax statement." Uh, second form of remedy is B, altering the sign and its structure so that it conforms to the regulations and provisions of this code. Um, so that, that was my attempt to try to make that address, both with ground signs, wall signs, painted signs, anything. Although I think you gave me some additional wording too, that's good for paint. Um, I don't even know if I got that in here, but probably didn't necessarily want to consider.
Oh, that's probably in that definition provision.
Yeah, I don't know, so maybe I'll pull it after the next one, see if that's.
So, so, so section B, they're altering, uh, the sign and the structure so it conforms to regulations. Um, I mean, would that be updating the sign?
Right, yes. Sure, I'm with you.
Okay.
I think I left off a little bit there on sign regulations. Section eleven forty-nine, where we would try to, um, we would insert a first paragraph under general requirements. Except as specifically provided in this chapter, only those signs which identify, advertise or promote the use established or goods sold or services rated on the premises upon which the sign is located shall be permitted to be constructed, maintained or continued in a municipality. That way, any sign on a property specifically rates relates to that property. Um, now, there was an issue that I'm hoping, uh, Jeff can address for us an hour later, and that's the issue of, um, non-conforming signs. And I did not know if, um, you know, we, we have a, we have a lot of signs here that we'd like to get rid of at some point in time. You know, typically, I think a non-conforming is after a year, then you lose your non-conforming status. Would it be the same for the signs, or would we have?
No, I think it would, and I think it would be a little bit a combination of what we've, what you're already seeing is that if you move forward with this, you'll have this new section on abandoned signs. And that will take care of, um, that should take care of a number of signs that are, that have been abandoned. Even if, so let's say they're abandoned right now. And then you create this abandoned sign category, they would technically be non-con, they would be existing non-conforming uses. But, we already have in our code a provision for non-conforming uses, that if they are, if they remain dormant for a year, they lose their non-conforming status. So, yes, so worst-case scenario is if you make a change to your code that makes a lot of signs non-conforming, if they stay that way for a year, they lose their non-conforming status.
So then, so the, the clock starts when the legislation's passed?
Yes.
So, let's for just conversations sake, say this moves along, it becomes a change effective August one, okay, date of two thousand and fifteen. Nobody's gonna have to do anything until two thousand sixteen, August first.
Not for any existing.
Existing, existing non-conforming.
Existing non-conforming, right. Now, if a sign is not abandoned, then say August first, this all goes into effect, and then it becomes abandoned, it doesn't have any non-conforming protection.
Right.
It would just fall right under, if it's a, what I, what we'll call like a newly abandoned sign, it just falls under this new section. That if it's been abandoned for ninety days in any twelve-month period, you can get rid of it.
Okay, and I just wanna be sure I understand, what about, what about the businesses that we know have already been gone like two years? Do we have to wait a whole year from the passage, or if we?
Do, well, the question would be, do we have anything in our code right now that prohibits them? My guess is no, that's partly why we're, why we're doing this. So if there's nothing that prohibits, if there was something that prohibited them in the code now, they wouldn't have any non-conforming status protection. We could just proceed under whatever section of the code we have. I take it we probably don't have that, which is why we're moving forward with these changes. Which then means there'll be, I mean, the word that is sometimes used is grandfathered in, I don't like to use that because it's really.
It's not a legal term.
Right, I mean, it's your illegal, not, existing non-conforming use. Luckily, our code already has a provision that says, non-conforming, if non-conforming uses lay dormant for a year, you lose your non-conforming status, and then you can, you can get rid of it.
Okay.
So yes, even though there are ones that are probably abandoned for years now, it's almost like they get, they get a year, once this goes into effect. They would, because I believe our non-conforming ordinance says tw, I think it says a year.
It does, yeah, I'm sure.
That's different, different communities, but.
Let's talk through a, a scenario if we could, that, um, business, business has moved out, you know, some time ago. Um, and their, their sign is still attached to, to the building. What would stop a, a building owner from putting a for-rent sign over top of that, that sign as, as a means of?
Hiding it.
Hiding it, or, or, you know, I probably.
Well, I'd have to look at specifically at the code, but if it's, if it's a big sign, um, I mean, we have a section that talks about temporary signs, that probably, that has size limitations. If you wanted to just hang, drape a giant for-rent sign over an existing sign, probably wouldn't be able to because of the size of it, you'd have to, you'd have to get a permit for it. I mean, or even if you did hang a big for-rent tart over it, it doesn't necessarily, um, it doesn't give you any added time, because it's not, it's probably not legal to have a sign of that, a temporary sign of that size, or a temporary sign of that nature. But I, I'd have to look.
Yeah, we do have something about real estate and leasing that prohibits, but then depending on what they make it with,
Right.
um, we, we cannot control that a little bit.
What kind of material it is.
And timing, but I, I know we do have a really big one, and I don't think we're saying anything about that right now.
You wanna?
Go right ahead.
Try this, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, I just kinda can't keep, keep act that this altering, altering the sign and, and structure, I was thinking, well, you know, is, is that, is that a loophole that somebody could use to?
It could be, I mean, it could be if someone makes then a legal use, a legal use of the sign, then it's not like it's non-conforming anymore, it may now become, it's no longer an abandoned sign if they're using it for an appropriate permitted purpose. But you'd have to look at each one individually to see if it is permitted or.
And something that has stopped a couple people already is again, our, our updates require different materials. And that has stopped some folks from just throwing something up under the current stuff. So, little by little.
Okay.
Within a year, we should be looking pretty good then. Okay, um, let's see, I think. I think that reviewed everything that had. Uh, no, one additional piece I don't think I talked about yet, and this is simply the notification section for board of zoning appeals, um, specifically for VZA. We have a general notification, but it, it follows the same guidelines that we're using for planning commission and our other notifications, just goes out for the board of zoning appeals. Okay, um, now on some of the additional modifications. Those last two pages, in addition to the sign issue, we have, um, one to consider, and this is we, in regards to, again, it would be a two-part, adding a definition and then adding in requirements about dog, dog runs slash cages. Which seems to be an issue at several locations throughout the village, and we don't have anything right now that can help us with this issue. Um, let me go ahead and review this with you. Uh, first defining a dog run or cage is a dedicated enclosed area within a rear yard where dogs may be contained in or exercised. And then, um, uh, there would be a new section regarding requirements pertaining to those runs or cages. The village of Green Hills would, would require that a building permit be obtained prior to the installation of a dog run or cage. Dog run slash cages are subject to the following requirements. The dog run slash cage can be used for no other purpose than a dog run slash cage. Uh, minimum height four feet, maximum height six feet, maximum area not to exceed two hundred square feet. Dog run cage shall not be wider than fifteen feet, maximum length of any side of the dog run cage shall not exceed twenty feet. Material shall be either chain link with black vinyl coating, wrought iron, or materials similar to wrought iron. Uh, inside, and that might be one we ti, wanna take a look at, but I don't know all the materials around there for those kind of things. I think most of them that I've seen are chain link, but. Um, inside corner of the house or an alcove shall be used to screen dog run cage if possible. Dog rated run cage shall not be visible from the street. It must be attached to the house, it cannot be freestanding. If the dog run cage's rectangular shape is alongside of the dog run cage, that must be attached to the house. And they would be required to call underground utility inspection before they start digging footers or the fencing, that would be, uh, part of that. So, I felt that that addressed some of our issues in a number of ways, probably the biggest one is making the, um, keeping it up against the house, so it's not a situation where people are just like letting their dogs out in the backyards and making them out there to be a nuisance. Um, again, I think we, if you're interested, we should consider maybe if there are any other materials that someone would make.
Yeah, I, I was just kind of interested in, in the, the chain link with the fine.
Black, yeah.
Vinyl coating, I mean, wh, why?
It's, that's probably more original thing. I, I was pulling from other communities who have similar requirements, and that's, they all said that, I don't know if they all copy each others, or what.
Rust.
Yeah, rusting, I think rust, um, I know they have green vinyl too though, so I don't know, but the vinyl coating.
You could just say vinyl.
For these dimensions, they've got a pre-made cage, almost, to these dimensions.
Do they? Okay.
And it's sold by the hardware stores, it's sold by the discount hardware. And it's like about as big as this tabletop. Okay, and you can buy them. I had a tenant that wanted to put one, one to have a dog. Okay, so I bought one. Put it in, fastened it to the house. Without seeing any of this, fastened it to the house. About a month later, she decided she didn't wanna have the dog. So I said, "Well, lady, I got news for you." The cage was two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Or go get a dog, right?
Can only be used for a dog. Purpose, Wes.
I feel like we should put house, kennel, and every other thing to come up with.
Um, did any of the, I, I'm sorry, go, go ahead and finish.
No, no, that's, that's it, I think.
Do you have any others s- suggestions? Oh, the, say.
Oh, for that particular one?
No, uh, for, for any others.
Dog run, yeah. Uh, yeah, a couple, um, it has come up to take another look at the requirement on the height of the fencing used for the screening of garbage, um, containers. And I think the issue is that it's at, it's at four and a half right now. Um, I remember during some of the discussion that that's not standard fencing. Um, you know, you can get four-foot fencing, you can get six-foot fencing, I'm not sure if you get five, and I don't think you get four and a half, but I, I think one of the things is it, you need to think about, are we trying to totally cover the containers, or just create some kind of screening? Hey there, how are ya?
Apologize for being late.
Got a fresh set of stuff to do here.
Don't even have an excuse. Hey.
Okay, a couple additional updates here, we'll take a look at, and right now, um, back on the kind of the fencing. Um, so I, I want you to be aware of it, so you can take another look at that, um, I can pull that out for a next meeting, and but you can take a look at it now, I'll be thinking about it, and we'll see where you want to go with it. And then, uh, actually, the marijuana issue I didn't put on here, but I know you were, wanna save few words.
Well, I mean, it's probably not on here because the constitutional amendment, if it moves forward, says it's not, that these establishments are not subject to local zoning regulations.
The marijuana, yeah.
Yeah. So, I know that there had been some earlier discussion about should we be looking at our zoning code. My point is, there's nothing to look at because the, the constitution says you don't get to, they are, will be subject to building code, fire code, other safety codes, but it specifically says they will, that you, you cannot prohibit them through zoning regulations.
Um, can you? You, you, um, walk us through procedurally what happens with these suggested, uh, changes to the zoning code? And if we like to, if planning commission, or zoning, uh, I'm sorry, if planning commission recommends the junk storage one, but not the operations within closed structures, or, or would these come to council as individual ones, or will they come as a batch, or how, how does that work?
Can it go back individually?
They can, sure. Um, I mean, what I would say is, it, it will probably depend on how planning commission, how you feel about it. It may be the kind of thing where if you're gonna give a recommendation, like a yes recommendation,
Yes.
you may package those all together.
Mm-hmm.
And if there are any that you're recommending no, you may package those differently, in a, you know, separate thing. Ultimately, it's all gonna go back to council, whether it's, and it all will come with some recommendation from planning commission, whether that's a letter that says, "Planning commission voted," and the following ones were recommended for approval, and the following ones were, were not, I mean it.
So take us through the hearings, the.
Right now, it's a planning commission for, as a discussion item, you can, um, you, you can discuss it. At some point, planning commission has to hold a public hearing.
Right.
Um, after that public hearing, planning commission will vote on a recommendation. That'll go back to council. Once that goes to council, council has to schedule a public hearing. And then it will be, I mean, I, I guess I will, I, it sort of depends how it comes from planning commission, how, uh, because what I'll do is I'll, then I'll draft the legislation that will get back to council, and depending how the recommendations come from planning commission, I'll either, I mean, there aren't that many, really, when you look at it. And it, it may be easiest to just present, you know, an ordinance to council on outside storage. Do you, you know, do you wanna, and, and see how planning commission recommended that? Instead of doing one ordinance with all the different ones, it may just, each section may be a separate piece of legislation that goes to council.
Am I understanding you correctly that, um, we would have our deliberations, and then a public meeting, and then go to council with it at that point? Or is it possible for us to come up with what we think are some logical changes? Uh, I'm sorry, I missed, apparently there are some changes, but we don't need to go over that, just for me, we can talk later or something. But anyway, could we go back to council and talk to them, and have like a joint meeting and discuss it, and then have the bar public meeting, and then make their, make their recommendation?
I would suggest no. I mean, the way the process works is that planning commission does the initial, kind of what I'll call the heavy lifting. And you can have as many discussion meetings, you know, you can discuss it however you want. Ultimately, you have to have a public hearing at planning commission, and then ultimately, you need to make recommendations that go to council. Those recommendations may be, I mean, the, the point of the be, having the discussion items and the public hearing is that what you recommend back up to council may be different than what is on the page here. Which is why you may end up with just all positive recommendations back to council, but with some tweaks to, to what you have in front of you.
And if council disagrees with what we recommend?
Well, they, they have the authority to do that. I need to, I would have to look at specifically at that. I know generally, um, planning commission makes a recommendation, then council acts based on those recommendations, but council has the authority to overrule a recommendation from planning commission. And some, I, I need to double-check our specific code, but sometimes that takes like, uh, a supermajority of council, instead of just a regular majority vote, it would take, um, an increased number of votes to overrule. Sometimes though, that supermajority is only needed if you want to approve a negative recommendation from planning commission, but to deny a positive recommendation, sometimes that's just a regular majority. And it's specific to your code, and to tell you the truth, I didn't look at that section before I walked in here tonight. But, but it's, but suffice it to say, whatever comes out of planning commission, council has the authority to deviate from that, whether it's through a regular majority or, or a supermajority.
They would just kick it back to us, they would make their change and go on with their public meeting.
Um, I can't, I, I can't say what council would do, they have the ability to just overrule the planning commission recommendation. They, they may decide, just like, council always has the authority to initiate things and refer it to planning commission, which is like how this got here in the first place. They may, council, I, I'd have to think through that, but council will probably have the ability to, if they wanted, they could just vote it all down and then initiate something new back with planning commission. But they don't have to. And there will be another, there will be a public hearing at both the planning commission level and the council.
Does, does anybody have any questions procedurally? If not, I, I suspect you asked because you have a comment?
Yeah, just a one comment.
Let me find out who else has comments, and then I'll, does anybody else wanna say anything?
You apparently are changing operations within enclosed structures, is that, have you discussed that?
Thad, what's your comment?
Yeah, I, uh, first of all, Ivan, I think you really cleaned up the part that I was really concerned about, that was the, uh, removing sign question. You put language in there, I think helps considerably, because the way it was before, there was a question whether it only applied to a freestanding structure. We only have one that I know of, and that's Johnny's toys. Um, what I would suggest though, just the abundance of caution and one sentence. Your code already has, or our code, so, so, already has a, um, definition of a wall sign and a ground, a ground sign in it. I would suggest you make reference to that, saying that something, the fact that this, this section shall apply also specifically to the, a wall sign and a ground sign as defined in eleven point, eleven forty-nine point oh three. That would be A, and then also B of your ordinance. It's already there, but if anyone has any question, whether what type of signs we're dealing with, you included both in that, and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And that's the only question I had as far as that's concerned, because I think that would resolve any questions, at least I had. Uh, because we don't wanna come back again on this. We've been trying to get this done for about three years now. And, uh, and the only other thing, point I would make is, uh, as far as, uh, blocking garbage cans, fences. Uh, I, I think they're talking about rumpet bringing in their own, uh, cans. Those things are, I think, the height exceed what you're permitted now under the zoning ordinance by about six inches to twelve inches, depending which ones you get. I would strongly suggest you would increase the permitted size, height of those fencing, those fencing used to block. I would strongly suggest you would increase the permitted size, height of those fencing, those fencing used to block the garbage, uh, cans that we see there. That was brought up at the, when we started talking about this zoning, but it was so much in front of everyone's plate at that time. No one really had a chance to really go through it and think it out, because everyone had this old standard four feet, four foot, uh, cans. Meanwhile, more and more people are getting these Rumpke cans, which are great, and they last longer.
It's big.
Big. So I, I, whatever that size would be, I would increase that, and that, and I'm done, and I'm outta here.
All right. I, I wanna take each one and see if anybody on the commission has any discussion items or questions about each one, so. On the outdoor storage in residential areas, does anybody have any questions or comments that they would like to see either changes, or they're not sure what some of these?
How, how would this address someone who does landscaping, you know? Have like a, you know, pickup truck with a trailer and their mowers on the back of it, I mean, that's a business operation.
Um, well, it's, this is a residential area, and, and it would be storage. If it's their business operation, they're probably coming and going. I, I know where we have a couple of issues like that, and.
Most of you can understand.
Yeah, either trailer's on the street, so like, there are.
I said, most of you can understand. Where a guy brings his truck home, you know, a trailer, and his mower is behind it. Cause there's, there's quite a bit of cash sitting there. It's very easy to back up to one, hook onto it, and away you go. And you, you're in a, uh, that's good business. You know? So, it's, if you want the people to live in the houses, et cetera. It's a condition that's, it's gonna be there because of his way of making an income.
And we do have other sections, um, that do pertain to vehicles or other types of commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably what we would look at for something like this. On the other hand, he, if that individual would choose to use storey hole or mulch for their jobs in their front yard, they would.
No, that should not be, most of them do not do that. They will ha- in a trailer, they've got a spot where they would take a job out, okay? Put the materials into that spot, and, but, like, behind their equipment, you know, or in front of their equipment, actually. Quite a few of them. And it's, uh, just something that, you know, a lot of these guys want to have a good appearance when they get done with the project. They don't wanna have a bunch of bunk laying around. If it does, you don't want that guy next year.
Right.
I mean, that's.
Sure.
And most of them know that. I've had two of.